Has anyone heard from the mayor?
Yeah, she, I think because the link wasn't on the agenda, she was hunting around for it.
Okay, gotcha. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
All right. One second while I open up my agenda. I'm a little rusty.
That's why there's a study session so you can warm up.
Thankfully. All right, Hector, are you ready to go?
I'm ready, Mayor.
All right, so we will go ahead and call the study session of February five, twenty twenty five to order. Roll call, please.
Counselor Coley.
Here.
Counselor Coley. I see that you're present, Counselor Panemiro.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Medina.
Here.
Counselor Pestejo.
Here.
Counselor Byers is not present. Counselor R.A. Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Ayers Flood.
Here.
Mayor, you have a forum.
Thank you, Hector. A item on the agenda is oh, bouncing back and forth, that's right, challenging. Presenting on Emerald Ash Borer of Oregon Department of Forestry Staff Report, staff?
Hi. This is a presentation, I think Kat Bethay is here to do that, so I'll just pass to her.
Hi, everyone. My name's Kat Bethay. I am with Urban and Community Forestry with Oregon Department of Forestry. It's a lot of foresteries back and forth. Okay, I'm sharing my screen. Hopefully, everyone can see that. Okay, so I was asked today to talk about Emerald Ash Borer and how the city of talent can prepare for this. With topics focusing on what is EAB? What's the spread in Oregon look like currently? What is the anticipated impact on your city, especially in your landscaped areas and some management recommendations? Feel free to throw questions in the chat and then we can kind of discuss at the end if that is minable to everyone. So this is what we're going to cover introduction to history, Oregon's response so far, signs and symptoms, so you might be able to recognize it. The ID of ash trees and the impact that they have on our ecosystems and management. So diving right in, Emerald Ash Borer is an invasive and highly destructive wood-boring beetle that infests and kills ash trees. It is an introduced species, so North American ash did not evolve with EAB and have very little resistance to it. Most ash trees infested with EAB will end up dying. It can also infest other tree species in the family Olicia, which includes olive and white fringed tree, which is a common street tree planting, but not native here. Now, the way that this works is that the larva of EAB will actually feed beneath the bark and that issue of trees, it's basically how nutrients kind of get from the ground to the leaves and vice versa. Eventually, the larva will feed so much that they create these galleries, which cuts off the flow of that nutrients. If you imagine trees having their roots like giant straws in the ground, basically the larvae are stepping across that. And what that does is it will actually stir the tree out. And once that happens around enough of the tree's diameter, this will kill the tree. This usually happens within three to six years after infestation, depending on how heavy your infestation load is. So EAB is originally from Northeast Asia, but it was found in Michigan in the Detroit area in two thousand and two. They actually believe it was introduced earlier in the nineties, but it was kind of a hidden or cryptic pest, and we'll talk about that in a second. But it rapidly spread across the Midwest and East Coast. This is a five-year time span, and you can see that it, after its discovery in two thousand and two, by two thousand and seven, most of the Upper Peninsula was infested. By twenty twelve, it had spread rapidly through the East Coast, and a federal quarantine was actually already in existence at this time. By twenty thirteen, EAB has jumped that federal quarantine, and you can see in the twenty seventeen map, we have it extending all the way to the southern part of the United States as well as Denver, Colorado. And then unfortunately, in two thousand and twenty-two, we were the first detection in the state of Oregon and on the West Coast entirely. It was detected by a Portland Bureau of Environmental Scientist Ecologist Dominic Mays, and he had actually taken a training course that OSU had put on years before. So, yeah, like I said, it was detected in Forest Grove. This is the current quarantine boundary. The smaller section up at the top here is the original quarantine. But an additional three counties have been placed under quarantine. So currently, the quarantine boundary includes Washington, Yamhill, Clackamas, and Marion Counties. EAB can spread fairly quickly on its own. Depending on which adult is flying, it can be up to ten miles a year, depending on your site conditions, but usually when we see these really large jumps, especially across the Rockies, the mechanism is some sort of human transport like of infested wood or infested materials or nursery materials. So one of the biggest reasons we have for this is community outreach and education about quarantine measures and proper sanitization. The quarantine will actually be updated automatically as adults are found. Thankfully, we've had some time to prepare for this. So from about two thousand and five to twenty thirteen, there has been active trapping for EAB throughout the state. This is a very small map of kind of the Upper Willamette Valley and the trap density. However, traps for EAB are not the most effective. And since two thousand and five, we've placed about thirteen hundred traps. Only seven of those have been positive, and they were in areas of high infestation. This is a large coordination between other local partners like Soil Water Conservation Districts, cities, state, and our federal agency partners. In two thousand and eighteen, kind of having seen the writing on the wall with it showing up in Denver, Oregon created a Emerald Ash Borer readiness and response plan. It was actually updated in two thousand and twenty-one, right before we discovered it. In two thousand and nineteen, this is a feedback we got on how we could prepare for the imminent arrival was collecting seeds from our native ash. This is the first time EAB has been found in an area with our Oregon ash, Fraxinus latifolia. And unfortunately, due to the mass die-off, we see a huge drop off in the genetic diversity. So we began a seed collection from that with my staff member at the ODF, Wyatt Williams. In two thousand and twenty-two, this is actually a, if the photo is small, but this is actually the site that we founded that first, which is Joseph Gale Elementary, and you can see, this is the middle of July, actually, and you can see how bare these trees are in comparison to the rest of the trees behind them. This kicked off a wave of visual surveying, trapping, and a mechanism to control and slow the spread of ash with of EAB, which is called SLAM, slowing ash mortality. Also, biocontrol began to be released in the state of Oregon. And then unfortunately, this timeline continues, and in two thousand and twenty-four, this past summer, we actually found additional infestations in the Few Creek watershed, which is on the Marion and Clackamas County borderline. So the important part for you all, how is EAB going to impact your community? This photo is from Forest Grove. This depicts a tree removal that happened in April of two thousand and twenty-four. The trees were replanted. However, if you can look at the canopy loss that you see in this one in this one neighborhood street, you can see this has a profound impact on the feel and the interaction in this neighborhood. So a thing that I ask municipalities to consider is what kind of messaging are you going to put out around EAB? The state does have resources. We have visual detections ongoing, but how are you going to address this locally within your community? So we're going to go into a short, brief segment on signs and symptoms. But just so you understand how this beetle has remained hidden for so long is, we can start where we are right now in October to March. Right now, the larval eggs have hatched and they have become larvae. They are inside the tree at this current moment, so there are no EAB flying around. This is what makes it very hidden. This is for almost all of winter, you will not see adult EAB around. So these eggs are crawling around, they are feeding, they are overwintering and causing damage to the tree that isn't available, isn't noticeable until the tree leaves out in the next spring. So in about April, the larval stage is this white kind of form. It's like a segmented worm form. About April, they will begin to become pupa, and then once they become pupa, they will actually become the adults. In May, right after the tree leaves out, you'll actually see this emergence of the adults, and they actually kind of burst out of the tree and start flying around. The adults then feed on ash tree leaves, they will mate and lay more eggs for about three to four weeks before dying, and that starts the cycle over again. The damage that the adults do to the outer leaves is actually fairly minimal and considered in comparison to how damaging these galleries are from the larva. It is also the only time of year you will find them flying around. One EAB adult can actually, one female EAB adult can lay between sixty to ninety eggs, although this is a range, and sometimes they can lay up to two hundred eggs per adult. And then we start back over. Those eggs will hatch, brew into the tree, and begin feeding over winter. So what are the signs you're looking for? Unfortunately, some of the signs are not as clear cut as we would like. They are very easy to hide, and this is how the infestation in the Midwest actually stayed hidden for so long. One of the first signs of a tree under stress is thinning canopy and crown. And this is the first photo here. You can see that although this is a time of year when the rest of the trees in the background are fully leafed out, this tree is struggling, only half the tree is leafed out. This can also be a symptom of other stress, though. Drought and physical damage are both particularly, they manifest in this way. Ash trees also are remarkably regenerative, and they actually create what's called epikarmic sprouting or shoots, water shoots, you might have heard them be referred to. This can also be another sign of physical damage or other stress responses, so it's not the most strong indicator that you have EAB. Finally, a very interesting sign and symptom to be on the lookout for is woodpecker damage. Woodpeckers before the introduction of Emerald Ash Borer in your area don't commonly eat off of ash trees or brew into ash trees that commonly, but once they learn that EAB is there and it is a ripe food source, they will actually begin actively hunting and trying to find the larva inside the tree. So they'll peel off this exterior bark, and you can kind of see here this light blonde color that's from them stripping the outer surface of the bark, and then once they locate larvae, they will begin drilling into it, and these are some woodpecker holes. So those are all symptoms. These are signs of EAB. If we're talking about alarm, any of those symptoms would probably only be like a one or a two on your alarm scale. These are red alarm. This is all hands on deck. Bark splits caused by EAB are very small. They're only between three to six inches, and that's actually from the bark dying off underneath. And then as the inner bark dies off, the exterior bark kind of bubbles up. You can think of it kind of like a blister. And actually, in this photo, you can see the next sign, which are the serpentine galleries. This is the damage done by larvae. And then when we were talking about the adults bursting out of the tree, they leave these very characteristic D-shaped exit holes. The ones in red circles are the EAB exit holes. The one in the center, that larger circle, is actually a woodpecker hole for size comparison. EAB infestations unfortunately usually start in the upper canopy, especially on the sunlit side of the tree. And they'll work their way down. So some of these signs and symptoms can be in the upper canopy of a thirty to fifty foot tall tree, which again makes it difficult to find. So another impact that we're talking about on the community is what happens as these trees become infested. Well, we similar, we see a really similar trend to tree die-off where it accelerates rapidly, but basically in your first three to five years of infestation, this green zone, EAB numbers will be fairly low, and your tree infestation rate will probably be really low. Homeowners don't report damage at this point is what we've, we've been told and what we've found. However, as this EAB population kicks up in this yellow zone, we also see ash mortality increasing exponentially. One of the stats that we've found out was that by year six through ten after your initial infestation, if left untreated and unmanaged, twenty percent of your ash trees in your community may be dying every year. The photos here are of dead ash trees that are standing in the Midwest. This upper photo is what it looked like in an urban area where you had these very large diameter straight trees that had died off, and the city had become overwhelmed so much by the amount of dead ash that they had to leave them standing and had to prioritize. And then the below photo, all of this brown here is, this isn't a summer drought cycle. This is all standing dead ash in a riparian area. As we kind of transition into years nine through thirteen, a majority of the ash are dead in your community. And unfortunately, because of Ash's great job at regenerating, what we have found is that even after an ash tree dropped, dies, and becomes a hazard, what you actually find is the respouting serves as more food for the EAB. So they don't just go extinct because there's the seed layer, and there's also all of this epikarmic respouting occurring on. By the time we reach years three to fifteen, the EAB population will have died off slightly, but also so are all your ash. So there are three populations that we find EAB in here. We find ash in Oregon. Natural areas are fairly, they don't need much description. It is our riparian zones. It is what's along stream banks and any kind of seasonal waterways. Urban areas are obviously an area for concern for the city of talent. We're talking about both right-of-way and yard trees. And then also we have a third type of habitat for ash trees in Oregon called wooi sites or wildland urban interface. They're kind of areas where development can interact with riparian zones. About thirty-two percent of housing in Oregon is in wooi, and in this study that I look found from the Northern Research Station, it actually said that fifty-two percent of housing in Jackson County is in a wooi or wooi adjacent area. In urban areas, ash are also commonly found in streets as street trees. They have been a very cheap hardwood to plant for the last twenty years because as that federal quarantine expanded, few and fewer states could sell their tree stock. They are a very important street tree. They offer a lot of benefits for utility, stormwater runoff reduction, pollution removal. And unfortunately, this is a, the photo on the left is actually a beautiful street that had a lot of canopy, and all of these trees were lost because these are all ash. Popular species of ash include green ash and white ash, which are two American native species, as well as the narrowleaf ash and the European ash. All of these are susceptible to EAB, and they are all likely to die. So what does the ass situation in talent look like? I have to say, I'm thrilled. You all do have a working tree inventory in our state software tree plotter. So this is what your current ash inventory looks like. There are eighty-nine ash trees that are listed as street trees in your city. So we'll talk about, you have one of the first steps of management, which is inventory, and we also have an ash tool that can help you on this website. So if you don't have someone who is currently managing tree plotter inventory, reach back out to us, and we can kind of get you situated. This is a really good tool that is available to kind of help you. This is a really good tool that is available to kind of help you run cost scenarios and look at what might happen and how you want to manage. So how, how do we do this? Management options? How do we develop a response plan? Well, it's very similar to how you develop a response plan for a wildfire. Um, we talk about E A B as one of the slowest moving wildfires you'll ever experience, but it is very similar in the language that we talk about it. Ready, set, go is a great mindset to have. Um, so when we're talking about ready, we're talking about learning signs and symptoms, which you have done uh as of today and make sure your staff know. Start inventory and risk assessment. The city of talent already has that, so you're actually very well prepared for ready. And then the last step of ready would probably to be create management plans, including how will you detect E A B in your city? Um, set is, once it comes to a certain distance within you, uh, you could even consider this within twenty-five miles of your city. Or within um a certain diameter. Honestly, if someone moved firewood, I mean, from Salem to talent is a day's drive with a load of infested firewood and you could have E A B that easily. But that's when you want to begin working with partners and begin your proactive ma- management. You also want to find a use for your ash wood. Um, this is a lot of dead woody material and that seems to be an issue that municipalities tell us they have a lot of issues uh in managing. And then go is, once it's an imminent threat, how are you going to train and educate your staff? How are you going to use this wood? And management will be a marathon, not a sprint here. It'll be ongoing. So uh, when we're talking about management plans, policy is a great first step as the city council. Uh, we recommend plant, stop planting ash for now. There are trials ongoing about trying to create resistant species of ash. Um, until then, the good news is you actually have a good starting point. Braxinus is not on your approved street tree list. That's great. However, do you have loopholes? Are there development heroes, parks, watersheds, nonprofits that could accidentally not be planting a street tree but could plant an ash tree? A good question to consider at this time is how is your city going to handle a ton of homeowners all wanting to remove ash at the same time? Um, so the city of talent tree code I dug around a little bit, you do have a nice nuisance removal policy. Um, that states that any tree or shrub on private property or in a planting strip of budding private property, which is a safety hazard, can be declared a public nuisance. So my question is to you, how are you going to implement this process once E A B arrives? Do you have the capacity for all of your homeowners requesting this at the same time? Tree inventory. Again, I'm thrilled that you have one. Um, this kind of tells you your E A B vulnerability. Trees are both assets and potential liabilities and you can't know what you don't have, but you do have an inventory, so I'm thrilled about that. When it comes to management plan options, you really have three strategies for each ash tree. You can remove and replace, you can treat, or you can do nothing. Now, each of these has benefits and risks. Removing and replacing does allow you to not suffer the consequences from losing all of your canopy all at once. And this isn't just canopy, but if you think about the impacts of stormwater runoff, um, trees do a lot to mitigate that. Your homeowners' utility bills are mitigated by their street trees. So in this instance, removing some strategically and not having to wait until all of your trees die in that you, that ten to twelve year frame. Can make you handle that loss better. I would recommend creating a criteria. How are you going to choose which trees to remove? Will it be under a size threshold? Will it be trees that are in the worst condition first, or are you going to try to do it where it's a priority based on infrastructure risk? Free removals are expensive. However, this is a method that allows you to control a lot of risk. The second management strategy is treatment. This is the cheapest option um over the long term from removal. Right now, costs are equalizing out a little bit with this as more and more arborists become trained, though. But in the Midwest, basically, you could treat a sixteen inch tree for twenty years before you reach the cost of removal. And I also have a graph from the city of Ottawa that we'll discuss later about costs. You can also, because you can treat every two to three years, you can actually decrease the annual hit to your budget by picking a certain selection of trees to treat each year. And again, you need some criteria for this. Do you want to save largest trees so you're preserving most of your canopy? Do you have like heritage or cultural trees that you want to preserve? Um, or do you have really large sized trees that are going to be most expensive to remove? And then do nothing is a strategy. It's a different strategy depending on whether talking about urban trees or natural area cheese. It is, however, not the cheapest when it comes to liabilities and lawsuits. And the risk can be the highest because ash trees are incredibly dangerous to remove once they are dead. I have sent this resource onto you, so it does have information that you can read about why we would want to remove and replace. Um, I would like to put a note here that when you are replacing, you do have a beautiful street tree list and make sure that the replacements for private trees are also as diverse. Um, and this will help you mitigate future tree loss issues. One of the reasons why we are in this spot right now with ash tree. Is because when we lost Elms to Dutch omnizies, a lot of Elms were replaced with ash. So we really want to have a well-rounded canopy. So if a pest comes through and targets paples, for example, then we won't be facing this problem in another five to ten years. Dying ash are dangerous and this is an important factor when you're choosing which mitigation. Um, once ash have exceeded thirty percent of their canopy loss, we have to bring in specialized material. This is a crane here. And arborists will no longer uh climb a tree to remove it, which means it makes it more expensive. Treatment, there are a lot of treatment options available and you should definitely work with a certified arborist. Uh, arboristsetreesaregood.org. But treatment for E A B is thankfully something we have twenty years of practice in. It can be up to ninety-five percent effective. But trees have to be healthy enough to treat. They can't have significant damage to them. And you cannot wait too long and treat a tree after it has been too damaged by E A B. Um, this is best on trees that are larger than six inches. And depending on which chemical formulation you use, has to be repeated every one to three years. But it can be more cost effective than a removals. There were several chemicals that were uh found to be effective against E A B. Trunk injections, soil drenches and trunk sprays were all methods. However, out of all of these, the consensus choice is ending up to be amamectin benzoyate. It is a systemic injection. Here is the setup on the bottom. And I'd really like to highlight that this is an example of how effective tree treatment can be. These are two ash trees side by side. The one on the left was treated and kept up with treatments. And you can see the one on the right is fully dead. It does need in the state of Oregon to be up administered by a licensed pesticide applicator who has been trained in how to use the systemic injection system. If you do nothing, you are going to have dead trees standing and those are going to have ecosystem impacts. There's going to be loss of community benefits. And they are very expensive to remove if you need to remove them. However, doing nothing might be a really good option for trees that are low risk. They're in areas that people are not occupying, either in your natural areas. One thing that we try to get everyone to prepare, how do you manage this? So this is a look at budgets for municipalities after years of introduction. So this bottom scale here is years of introduction from E A B. And you can see this is forestry parts of the budget. Of the total municipal budget. So most of these states had their forestry budgets be about less than point four percent of their total budget. And you can see that costs really spike in that seven to eight year timeframe. Ottawa had a very fascinating presentation recently where they did a prediction for their costs. This is this orange line here. They discovered it in two thousand and eight. And they said, well, what happens if there's just full decline? And we don't do anything. They estimated they would reach ten point nine million dollars in their budget by the year twenty sixteen. However, great news is they didn't do nothing. They chose a management strategy. And that cost, actually, they still have not reached it and they're anticipating they won't reach it until twenty twenty seven. So doing a strategy does help reduce costs. Um, a really cool benefit of this is this black line on this chart is what they anticipated for canopy loss and it actually was much less. Um, once they took strict steps to proactively manage it. Now I could spend an entire presentation talking about what are we going to do in our natural areas? And that is something that I actually can present on, my coworker Matt Mills can also present on. But for natural areas, you still have the same three options. You can choose what you're going to treat, you can choose what you're going to remove and replace. And you can choose what you're going to moderate or assess. They do have some special criteria and we should talk more if you have more natural areas that you're looking at managing. Now, a takeaway from all of this is the active quarantine. If and when your county gets added to this quarantine, that is going to restrict the movement of all ash material. That includes logs, nursery stock, um, wood chip from taken down trees. It also requires you to treat the trees somehow um to move material outside the quarantine. So one treatment is chipping a tree. And then it also recommends limiting ash tree removal and pruning to October first through April thirtieth. This is when adults are not flying around and you reduce your risk of spreading it to another area. Because one part of your county, like Jackson County, is a large county. You could have E A B on one county end and not have it on the other end. The longer we can slow the spread, it gives communities more time to prepare. Uh, if you're thinking about policy, it might be good to think about how are you going to interact with the quarantine? And how can you support that before it is a mandatory requirement for you? And the quarantine does expand automatically um as soon as our federal partners confirm E A B in a new county. When we're talking about wood use, think about where does your wood waste go currently? Um, unfortunately, this is a photo from the Midwest, uh, this, and it was just logs had to be removed, so they were not a physical danger. And then they were left on site. No one wants this piling upside in your streets, in your neighborhoods. Um, this can be a huge logistical challenge. What can you use? And um identifying networks is something you can do right now in the ready stage of preparedness. When it comes to public education, this is one of our best weapons against E A B. The key messaging for the public are three things. Don't move firewood. Buy it where you burn it. Any movement of firewood because ash is such a great species for this could inadvertently spread this all the way across our state in a matter of days. Follow the quarantine for ash material. Once that quarantine is expanded, but also respect the quarantine that is in place. And then stop planting ash. And those are the three takeaways that we would love for you to communicate. We also have a comms plan that is available for municipalities and I can connect you with our public affairs person who could have, has created that. I knew you all were going to get a copy of this, so this is a page of resources. I also want to say that our new website, oregon E A B dot com is now live and is available for public use. Uh, and I wanted to thank everyone very much. And if we have any questions, we can go to them. Oh, I see in the chat that um people are asking to unmute so they can ask questions.
Hey there, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Awesome. Thanks for the presentation. Um, regarding the pesticides and injections, I know talent has a policy of. Um, not using herbicides and pesticides. Is there any examples of municipal, I mean, I think. A lot of municipalities have um policies like that. Um, do you have any examples or knowledge of if that's been worked around for specific circumstances or how that's worked?
Yeah, it's pretty common once E A B is in a community for them to create an exemption for treating ash trees. Or um another thing I see pretty commonly is municipalities locking it down and saying, hey, you either have to go through our approved contractor that we have a contract with. Or in the case of the city just handling street tree maintenance, saying, we are dealing with street trees. Citizens need not um work on their street trees, but your yard trees request an exemption and we're going to file through that. One of the formulations of amamectin benzoyate is non-restricted use. Though, that is something to talk with a licensed and trained arborist who is also trained in that system.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, there's a question in the chat about can E A B spread by moving wood chips? That is one of the recommendations for the quarantine is treating your wood. Um. Ideally, your wood chips would be smaller than one inch by one inch. If they are chipped to that small of a size, the concussive force of chipping will actually destroy the larva. However, the reason why we recommend doing this while the adults are not flying around is because when you're in a heavily infested area. The adults could come and land back on your wood. You could have really large wood chips that have made it through your chipper and then you could inadvertently spread E A B. But if you're following proper protocol on both time of year and chip size, that is a effective method at reducing E A B. Uh, any other?
I have, I have my handy hand. Um, yeah, so I'm wondering if you have been um, Kat, if you presented to other cities in Jackson County or the county. Um, the rounds that you're doing, and I'm also wondering about uh sources of of funding to help uh small cities.
Sources of funding is probably the biggest request we get. As I am a member of the state, uh, I cannot advocate or push for my own budget for my work project. Um, so that is a limitation that I personally have. What I do tell small cities is that there are a lot of small grants for landscape resiliency. This is a landscape resiliency issue. This could also be a fuels reduction issue, especially in areas with high fire. Ash burns uh very well. It has a high B T U and it can burn green. So obviously, if you were talking about this from a fire risk perspective, mitigating and preventing this could very well be part of that grant. Um, right now, most areas in the state that are dealing with, are dealing with this with like small grants. And there's no comprehensive funding source currently available, I'm afraid to say. When it comes to where I'm doing outreach, um, obviously, we've been prioritizing in areas that are, you know, within that twenty-five mile of a possible infestation. So I believe you are our first uh Jackson County. Reach out that has reached out to us and I appreciate the proactiveness. It is never too soon to think about this.
I have a question. Um, this is Mayor Darby. Um, is there any uh information about the environmental impact of this, the chemicals that are being used to?
Yes, that is, we are very lucky when it comes to E A B that this has been studied for twenty years. Um, one of the reasons why the systemic kind of won out over the other ones is the difference between like a perfume versus an IV. You can smell someone else's perfume. That would be something like a foliar spray. It has higher uh off-target impacts because it is like a perfume. It can impact other people. The systemic injected side is however, more like an IV, right? It impacts the things that are directly interacting with that one tree. Um, and there are rules to help mitigate some of the issues. For example, you cannot treat trees that are within three feet of a water system because of the possible impacts. Um, on our website, the oregon E A B dot com, there is actually a whole page dedicated to research that has been ongoing. And on that page, there's actually a whole tab that is about the off-target impacts. So it is definitely worth a check. Uh, it's worth a read. And um, I, I hi, it is a complex thing. We actually also have an outreach material that I believe is linked in my resources page. That is specifically going over the most comical, the, sorry, the most common chemical compositions used to treat E A B. And it's a very detailed five-page document that goes over off-target risks. We are also fortunate because ash are wind pollinated, which is really great for us because it does mean that there is less interaction. And we're also incredibly fortunate um that leaf out and pollen go at a different time in ash trees. And so you don't have that interaction with pollen being infested as much. Because the pollen is going to be done before you treat your trees for the year.
Great information. I just have one more question. Um, you know, we recently had the Almeida fire a few years ago, five years ago, and uh the Greenway. Burned down to the ground for the most part and it's starting to recover. It's starting to come back. Has there been any uh? Regional discussions about whether or not ash is returning and and whether or not this is a good opportunity to mitigate in those areas?
Um, so the regional discussion is, no one else previously has dealt with ash and fire. Now that is changing, right? Uh, my boss's kid goes to school on the East Coast and in a state that's never had a fire before. And she had to evacuate due to fires this last year. Now, in our area, that's obviously a huge concern, especially for Southern Oregon. When it comes to ash regeneration, that has been really well studied. Ash have prolific seeds. They drop into the soil and the soil seed bank does last for five to seven years. So even though the, your Greenways have, you know, completely burned down, ash is going to be one of the first regenerative species. Unfortunately, that does mean you still have space for E A B to infest because we have found in Oregon actually infested regrowth from something that's as small as a centimeter. Previous to this, they didn't think it could infest things smaller than two inches. So that is unfortunate for us.
So my follow-up question on that is have there been any regional discussions about? I, you know, I appreciate the presentation to hear the talent. Where else have the presentations been made?
I think south right now that we have gone, we've done it with our O D F staffers. So a lot of our O D F staff have been aware of this and they are starting to think about that, especially our regional, our unit and our district offices. In Jackson County, I do not think there is a working group right now. There are two working groups that have been kind of established. There is a state task force that anyone is welcome to attend. And I can send the invite out to that. It is a summary of all of our subcommittees. In your region, I do not believe anyone attends the state task force yet.
Well, if I could just make a comment and maybe take it back to your office. As we watch the Greenway start to grow back and recover and if ash is one of the first that's going to be coming in, it seems to me that this might be a good, this would be the best time to be looking at if there was going to, if a removal was going to be a strategy, this would be the best time to be looking at that. So I'm, so that would be the, the, the burn scar in the Greenway from the Alameda fire. If you could pass that along to your office, that would be terrific. It seems like a presentation to the county would be a real benefit in that regard.
Also partnering with your local soil water conservation district, oftentimes they are already working on active or preemptive restoration of those areas. That would also be a really good, when we're talking about identify local partners, that is, that is the areas that have been most successful have already kind of these working partnerships aligned.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? All right. Well, if there's no more questions, do you have any closing comments, Kat?
I wanted to say thank you all for attending today. I know you're experiencing some weather currently and I hope everyone's staying warm and staying safe and dry. And you have our work email. It's the invasive pests at O D F dot oregon dot gov. And I'd love to invite you all to the state task force. I can send you on the invite. That is a really great one-stop shop, but definitely check out the new website. That is a very soft launch, but that is, that is best source for resources right now.
Thank you so much. All right, everyone. Thank you, Kat. Bye-bye. So council, it's six forty-five. We're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting and we'll open the council meeting at six fifty. So you, please take a four-minute break.